Good evening, everyone, and Happy St. Patrick's Day. We're going to get started in just a moment. Waiting for a forum. I'm going to apologize in advance. I am in a public setting, although isolated, to do this meeting. And so you may hear a little background noise, but I will try to mute whenever I can. And so I see Aaron, and Tom, and myself, and Diane Stockness. So with that, I think we have a forum. I would point out that this evening, I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. This evening Commissioner Johnson will not be joining us. He is out of town. And I think with that, we're ready to go ahead and get started and do a roll call.
Commissioner Kelly?
I'm here.
Commissioner Stockness?
Here.
Hi Diane. Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hakkinen?
Here.
All right, outstanding. We are going to start this evening's meeting with a quick approval of and review of the minutes from the February 4th and the February 17th meeting. So let me go ahead and start with any public comments with regard to the meeting minutes from the 4th or the 17th. Please raise your hand if you would like to comment. Or speak up. I hear nothing, so I don't see anything or hear any comments. So let's bring it back to the commissioners. Commissioners, did you have any corrections or things you suggestions for the minutes of those two meetings?
No.
Tom, do you have any?
No.
Okay. Diane, how about you?
I just wanted some replies from some of the things that were in the minutes.
Okay. Go ahead and ask your questions.
Okay, so. Oh, it was the signs on the overnight parking. So I guess we could deal with that when we do the parking study. Because the city council, they wanted to address signs for no overnight parking because that's a big issue. Can you hear me Cheryl?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm out of town and I'm in another space right now, so I didn't know if you could hear me. And I think one of their comments are that we need to look at what Richard said about HCOG. We need to keep that in the realm of what we're talking about for, you know, all the transportation, bike routes, sidewalks, all that, because they have a plan. And so we might have him bring that plan so we can see exactly what it is.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Trevor, did you have anything you wanted to respond to that? Or shall we discuss this when we get to the parking and some of these different items in future meetings?
Well, Eli had mentioned the overnight parking signs. I'm not sure the status of that. Like I mentioned at the last meeting, you know, the city does need to proceed with a bit of caution on that because parking rules are a coastal access issue. There is currently a provision that no camping is allowed on city property that might cover, you know, sleeping in vehicles, which I assume is the issue since people who live here park overnight on the street. So, but I'm not sure the status. I know Eli mentioned putting a sign at the entrance of town. Certain signs could be exempt from review and if the rule's already in place. So that takes a little bit of thinking about. And then in terms of HCOG, yeah, I have added some additional information regarding HCOG into the circulation element of the general plan. They do have a nice website with a library, so a whole, you know, they've got a pedestrian plan, a trails plan, a bike plan, a transportation plan, unmet transit needs assessment. And so they have a variety of documents in their library that are updated periodically. And I have incorporated some of that information into the general.
And what does that acronym stand for?
That is the Humboldt County Association of Governments.
Okay. Are you guys hearing the echo that I'm hearing? Yes, okay. I'll see if I can fix that. In the meantime, any other comments? Let's see, Aaron, Commissioner Hakkinen, did you have any? Okay. Is there a motion? I have no corrections. Is there a motion to approve the minute?
Approve the minute. I'm sorry. I would say approve the minutes as stated.
So you have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
All second.
Okay. Commissioner Hakkinen, second? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion is approved. And sorry, guys, I'm interested if I can figure out what's going on with the echo. Give me one second here.
If everybody could make sure they're muted, it looks like everybody is muted.
Yeah, I'm running off my headphones. Can you hear me now? And there's no echo, right? Okay, good. I think it was the microphone came on on the laptop at the same time. I'm not sure why. It should default, but in any case, problem solved. So, okay, so we're going to move on from the minutes and we are going to next open up for the approval of tonight's agenda. So let me just ask if there are any suggested changes or comments with regard to tonight's agenda. And I know we'll talk about the Hasequus property. We will most likely have a presentation from, I believe it's the architect. And so when we get to that, we'll talk about that. But that still is agendized for tonight. It just may take a different form. All right, I see no other comments regarding the agenda. So with that, we're going to move to items from the floor. And at this time, we offer members of the community an opportunity to come to the podium, or in this case, raise hands or speak up, for up to three minutes to comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. So please note that pursuant to the Brown Act of California, the commission is not allowed to discuss at length or offer more than a brief comment or question or two on items that aren't on the agenda. So with that, would anyone like to make a comment? Please raise your hand or just go ahead and speak up. All right, I see no hands raised and hearing no public comments for the items from the floor. We'll next move on then to our tonight's agenda. And the first agenda item for tonight is the committee member appointment, the discussion and decision on appointing planning commissioner representatives to the STR, Trails, and Water Committees. Trevor, do you have a staff report you'd like to present on this?
Sure, thank you. So, yeah, I just, since we have new planning commissioner terms and a new committee, which is the Water Committee, it makes sense to relook at those committee assignments. And so I've provided you the resolutions that form each of those committees so that you can see what the purpose and the membership are for each of those. Just one thing to note from the resolutions is that at their meeting last week, the city council did make a couple of changes to the membership of the Water Committee. So it will be two council members, one planning commissioner, one public work staff member, and one customer from inside the city. So, and these appointments are nominated by the Planning Commission, but the appointment actually occurs from the city council. So you guys can volunteer or nominate commissioners to serve on these committees. And then those recommendations will go to the city council for final appointment.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that, I'd like to start with Commissioner, comments, questions, suggestions? If there are committees, if you'd like to nominate, if you yourself would like to volunteer or have thoughts on this.
Okay, Cheryl, Diane?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so I had a little chat with Trevor this week, and I needed to tell, you know, the recorder that I did have a chat. I want to stay on the STR Committee. The meetings have already been set for this year for the 4th Tuesday. And we're kind of on a roll. And I am the only commissioner in the city, except for Aaron. But I have the background for the STR Committee since I wrote the ordinance with Johnson and some of the other commissioners. So I'd just like to put that out there. And then I was concerned about the membership. And Trevor, I wanted you to look at it. It says, two members of the community, and then owners of STR. And I'm not sure that we have two community members unless Joe and Dick, Joe Moran and Dick are the community members. And then Jan Nash is the only STR owner. But Joe Moran manages STR. So I just wanted to look at that, Trevor, and see where we are with that. Because I would be the planning commissioner member, not a community member.
Yeah, that's correct. And it does look like there are two members who are not STR owners and/or business representatives, and two members that are STR owners or business representatives. So both Jan and Steve Moran can be on that committee. Dick Bruce is a committee member. I'm not sure who the other community member is at this time. Is Kathleen still on? Probably, must be Kathleen.
Well, no, nobody has met this year except for Dick, and Jan Nash, and Joe Moran, and myself. So there is, there is some, something there, you know, there should be one more community member then.
This is Angela. There is a vacancy for a community member.
Thank you Angela.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Okay, so it sounds like we, yeah, we need to then try to recruit. So if anyone knows anyone, please ask them to contact Gabe or Angela and, you know, express their interest. I think the way we'll structure this, since we have two or three different committees, is we'll just go ahead and go through them with the commissioner discussion, and then I'll open it up to public comments in case anyone has any concerns or questions about what the planning commission recommends. So any comments on Diane's suggestion that she retain her seat on the short-term rental committee? I, yeah, I, we're seeing head shaking Diane, which means we're actually all in favor of you continuing on the short-term rental committee. So I agree with that as well. So I think for now then, we will, as a planning commission, then we are recommending that Diane Stockness continue as the planning commission representative on that committee. All right, then I'd like to.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. You're welcome. Thanks for volunteering. Okay, so the next is the Trails Advisory Committee. I, I am currently the representative on that committee. I am thinking, since it's been a year, that it would be a nice experience for another commissioner. And so candidly, Aaron and Tom, I thought of one of you, if either of you are interested, no pressure, but I'm happy to continue. But I just thought I'd throw that out if somebody wants to jump in and take over. Yes, Tom?
I was planning on one of those, either the Trails or the Water. I prefer Water, but either one would be good stuff.
I was planning on either one of those, and I'm fine with either one, so it sounds like it would work out nicely.
So could I, I'll jump Water maybe, if that, if Water works.
Okay, let's talk about that next. And so, so I think, Aaron, then, if you are okay with it, would you like to try the Trails Committee for a while?
Sure, absolutely.
You sure?
Yeah.
I mean, again, no pressure, okay. All right, so then I think from a planning commission perspective, let me just ask the other commissioners, how do you guys feel about that? Does that work for you? Aaron replaces me on the Trails Committee.
That's tricky. Yeah, he had some good notes in the minutes from last month about Trails and signs and names.
Excellent, yeah, I agree. I think it'd be great. So, so Aaron then will replace me. And Aaron, also, I'll get in touch with you and kind of share where I left off and do a nice little handoff.
Sounds great.
Okay. All right, so the next then is the Water Advisory Committee. And let's talk about that. Commissioner Hopkins, I think you've expressed an interest in this. Do you want to say more about that? You're welcome to if you'd like.
I'm just interested in Water, the water for the city.
Okay. Okay, excellent. Diane or Aaron, do either of you have any thoughts about this?
Well, I'd like to nominate you Cheryl to do the Water Committee also, because you've done so much on our water contingency plan and the drought plan that we've done for a year. And you've got the background, you've done a lot of research with the Water Board, you've gone, you know, to the California Water Board. And I think you're, you're ready to go if you feel like you could tackle that. I'd like to see you on that committee.
I would bow to your greatness.
Okay, well, as the chair of the committee, I feel, thank you. I am happy to help out in any of the committees. I had also thought of Commissioner Johnson, but he is not here tonight. And also, Tom, I, until we got this new resolution, I also thought there would be two planning commissioners. And that's kind of creates a nice balance. But I also understand the need to keep the team, team small. So Aaron, how are you feeling about this? I know you're new to the commission, any thoughts or, you know, from what you've seen so far?
Yeah, I don't really have a whole lot of thoughts on the matter. Just I know it's definitely a critical issue for us. So I think it's important that whoever does it is able to be active on it.
Okay. Well, so Trevor, I'm not sure I make the decision, I guess. Tom, if you're okay, maybe then in that case, I will, at this point, will put me down as the person on the Water Committee, with the understanding though, that everyone on the planning commission will be contributing and providing input and helping me really understand their positions and, you know, depth of expertise. And then I'll keep you in the loop through our commissioner report. So we'll, if that's okay, well, does that sound okay?
I mean.
Okay. Okay, we'll start with that, and then, and then we'll see where we go from there. I would like to go ahead and open up to public comments at this time regarding these appointments that we've just described. Any public comments? Okay, I see none. So Angela, I think we've got that recorded, so I think we know what the different assignments are. So I'll go ahead and move on to agenda item number two. And agenda item number two is the Hasequus Design Review and Grading Permit and Coastal Development Permit to Replace That 1585-Square-Foot Two-Story One-Bedroom Residence With A New 2335-Square-Foot Two-Story One-Bedroom Residence In Approximately The Same Footprint. The Two Bedroom Septic System, which also serves as a One Bedroom Accessory Dwelling Unit, will be improved as part of this project with the addition of a pretreatment unit. So I'd love to hear more about this. And I will turn it over to Trevor for the staff report.
Thank you, yeah. Yeah, I didn't provide a staff report because, you know, the project may need to change, so there's going to be some additional information produced. But I, I do think it's, it's been on the agenda twice, and so I'm sure there's some questions and some people are curious about the project. And the applicant's agent expressed an interest in providing the plans, showing you guys the plans and describing the project. And I think that was a good idea. There was a geologic report prepared for this project, but coastal commission staff have brought up concerns regarding that report and some of the conclusions. So that's why it's going to be continued. But it is on the agenda, so, you know, there might be public here that wants to make comments. And like I said, in addition, the, looks like the applicant, as well as the applicant's agent are on the meeting and would like to provide a little bit of information and maybe answer some questions as well.
Okay, that's terrific. So with that, so who is the architect on this, Trevor? I'm sorry if you said, I didn't hear.
Julian Berg.
Julian, so it is Julian is present in. Okay, let's go ahead and, oh, there you are, Julian.
Sorry, I unmuted my mic here. Everybody can hear me fine then.
Yeah, that's fine, please go ahead.
I have, I'm used to using Zoom, so how can I share the drawings? Oh, I guess there's the share screen here.
Yeah, there should be a share screen if.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was easy. Okay, can everybody see this? Let's see here. I'm going to stop that for a second. I think I did the wrong one. All right, can everybody see the PDF of the?
It's showing up, that's fine.
Okay, great. There's a delay happening, so sorry about that. So yeah, I want to introduce myself. My name's Julian Berg. I'm the architect, working with Paul and Michelle on this house. And we're pleased to present it to you guys tonight. And, you know, I understand you can't make a formal decision this evening, given that we are still working with the coastal commission on reviewing their comments, which we just got yesterday, in fact, their formal comments written as a written letter. And we're going to have to respond to that. But I thought it's a good opportunity to introduce yourself, your, all of you to the project and run you through what we are planning. And we've been working really hard to create a house that we feel is appropriate for the North Coast setting and this particular site. And it's really been great working with Paul and Michelle on the design of this. It's been their dream to build on this property for some time. And they're planning on having it be a family project, which originally we were hoping to do this summer because both their son and daughter are home and want to participate in the construction before they head off to college. So we're really hoping to get it approved sooner than later. So I appreciate you guys wanting to check it out this evening. I wanted to also tell you that the Hasequus have lived in the area a long time, and they care deeply about this area. And they're active members of the community, raise their family here. They both have businesses here and, you know, stimulating our local economy and providing jobs for this area. Paul has been building high-quality homes and remodels throughout Humboldt and developing a style that fits our North Coast setting. We've also, we've got a great team for this project, and it includes Giovanni Vodero, who's also a West Haven resident. And he's doing our foundation soils investigation and geo-hazard evaluation. And we've actually worked together for a number of years. We used to work together at Lakos Sit Shits. So we've done a lot of projects together. And he's, I've worked with a lot of soils engineers, and he's one of the most knowledgeable guys I know of in the area. He's gone to Humboldt State studying geology, and he's done hundreds of projects here in the area. And also beyond, including all of California and Oregon. So I just want you guys to take that into account as you look at the coastal commission comments and the site. So I wanted to show you the Google map here. Can everybody see that? So how about my cursor? Can you see that? Okay. So here's scenic drive. And then there's an access drive which meanders through the trees down to the site. This is the existing house that is on the site that we will be replacing with the new house. And then there's another house here which shares the same access drive. And then there's a large house above, which is also on the agenda, is not 170, scenic drive. And this house here is probably 80 to 100 feet above our site. And you can see the edge of the bluff line here and the significant amount of large boulders and huge rocks along this edge. And the house is sitting right here, you know, kind of on this point. The house above sits on a massive rock that's incredibly stable and, you know, is the foundation for this house. So here you can see the overall site plan, the property lines and the existing, what is called the Raven House, which has been there a long time and is a one-bedroom, one-and-a-half bath house. The orange outline here is the proposed new two-story house. And then you can see the red, the red dashed lines showing the outline of the house that we're going to tear down and replace. Because it's really dilapidated, it's been there a long time, there's rot, the roof lines were done horribly. So water actually drains back into one of the center walls. And, yeah, it's just really not worth salvaging, but we've come up with a plan that largely follows the same footprint of this house. So as you can see on this plan, this is the main access driveway, which leads on to the house I showed you on the Google map right here. And then the existing driveway, which goes down to this, to the proposed house, is going to remain, we're going to build a roof over this end part here to provide a carport. And we're not removing any trees, major trees or vegetation on the site. And I think we've really developed a house that's going to blend in with the hillside and step to follow the existing contours. There's the existing septic system, which is down below, that was replaced not that long ago. We are going to add a Advantix pretreatment unit here to ensure that that is very clean. So just to reiterate, the house is constructed on the most stable part of the property. There's large rocks here, and there's a large rock above, so it is kind of a point on the edge of the coastline. Back in 19, in the mid 1980s, they did do a wire mattress along this side and grouted rocks, mainly because over on this side of the property, there aren't as many larger existing stones, so it's a little less stable. And I think there was a large storm event, which cut in a little bit. So they did this, and it really has stabilized everything. This is a zoom in of the site plan. I'm sorry, there's a. I'm sorry, there's a lot of information we're showing here. So once you do get your packet, you'll be able to study it closely, closely. But I didn't want to do a tremendous amount of detail this evening since it's more of an intro to the overall project. Here's the floor plan. We're keeping the main level nice and open and just simple. One of the key things of the project is, uh, we wanted to be sure we were designing handicap accessibility into the project. Because the Hasequists both have family members that are elderly that will come visit. So we've got, coming off the existing grade of the driveway, we have the entry porch on level. So you can just roll right in if you have to. And then this is all one level. With a, a bathroom that for that level. And then this is the lower level plan, which houses the master bedroom, a home office for them. And then the master bath and wraparound decks. The roof plan. And then here is the northwest elevation. So as you can see here, we've designed several elements to help the house blend in with its natural setting and surroundings. We have low shed roof lines. The house is several feet down from the access road. So really you can't see a lot of it because of the hillside. Here you can see the wraparound decks, the trellis elements. We're going to be using a lot of reclaimed, um, recycled redwood for siding treatments, the railing, this screen treatment here. Paul and Michelle have been saving redwood for years to be able to use on this project. So it's exciting that we're able to use a lot of local, not native materials. For the knee braces, the beams. I'm going to go on to, this is the southwest elevation, what you see from the coastline. And you can see below here the material palette, which consists of mainly the redwood, um, dark gray siding elements that we're going to use some Hardy panel. Because of the coastal air and salt, so that'll hold up well. The windows are thermally improved aluminum with a dark bronze finish. You can see we've got large overhangs to protect it from the, the elements. We'll be doing native landscaping, which further embeds the house into our coastal settings. And then here you see the southeast elevation. To the wraparound decks, there's an exterior access stair. And then this is the view from the driveway, although the driveway height is right around in here. If you can see where my cursor is, it's kind of the fascia board of the upper roof. So really you're only going to see a little bit of this roof from the driveway. I'm not sure if many of you have been down to the property, but Trevor did ask us to provide some photos of the existing house, which you can see here. It's got some issues. Um, here's the roof line, which is flowing down into this wall. So there's all kinds of water issues. Uh, there's rot and it's caused some of the issues with the overall site and house. This is the southwest view here. You can see the duck hanging out and it also has a similar shed roof line to what we're proposing for the new. So we're really trying to match some of the things that are here and have it just blend in. You can see the larger pine or fir trees around the bluff beyond. And then this is a good shot here that shows this is the existing main driveway that leads to the house beyond. And then this is the, uh, concrete driveway that goes down the hill to the, the house that will be remo, or, um, replacing. So you can see the roof line here. We're going to be building it up about four to five feet taller than this roof line. The main reason for that was to give us the, the handicap access from right about here. Well, actually a little bit down from there going in. And then it also allows us to have more foundation space below because we're going to be latching the new foundation into the existing bedrock and stones. So that it's fortified and really stout. This image was something Trevor asked me to provide. There's a lot of lines going on here. So you can see the red lines are the approximate existing house with the shed roofs. And then, you know, behind it is what we're proposing. It ends up being about 24 and a half feet tall. I realize it's a little confusing to see that because the ground is uh, sloping in multiple directions. So when I talked to Trevor about it, she wanted me to come up with the average. So I did the best I could. This point here was about the average from the lowest point of the house to the highest brown line. And also the slope in the perpendicular direction. So when I went up from that, um, to the absolute peak of the house, it was 24 and a half feet. And the maximum is 25. So we do meet that requirement. Here you can see the, um, existing upper road. So given that, you know, I was just giving you a quick synopsis here. I just wanted to reiterate that we are hoping to build this project in the near future. Preferably this summer, but I realized that, uh, we've got the coastal comments and whatnot to go through. In addition to, I've got to create the construction set for building permit approval. So there's some steps we have to go through. But I still feel optimistic that we can meet that timeline. So, yeah, thanks for, uh, letting us share this project with you and look forward to hearing your comments.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Mr. Berg. It's a beautiful design. Congratulations on the work you've done on this. Very, very nice. I want to, uh, at this time, open to any, understanding that we're continuing any decisions on this project and the deeper discussion to our next meeting. But while we have Mr. Berg, uh, let me open it up. Commissioners, if you have any questions, uh, let's go ahead and get those and then we'll open to public comment.
So Julian, Diane Stockness, can you hear me?
Yeah. Hi Diane, long time no talk.
Yeah, it looks great. So my question is what kind of road is it down to the residence from scenic? Is it gravel or is it paved?
No, it's a paved road. It's about 10 to 12 feet wide, depending on where you at, where you're at. There are a couple of pullouts.
Okay. Well, I was down there years ago and it's, I thought it was gravel and there weren't very many. There wasn't much vegetation, but now it looks, you know, from the Google map like it's loaded, but everything's grown with all the rain and sun we've had these last years. Yeah, that'll be, that'll be great, Julian. Thanks a lot. You did it very detailed and it definitely was not short, Julian.
Thank you. Oh yeah, my presentation. Well, longer presentations.
No, you did a good job. And Glenn, Glenn says hi.
Yes, hi back to Glenn. And I did want to propose that we could do a site visit if we wanted to. You know, uh, Trevor had mentioned.
We did that on Underwood and it was good, but Richard should be there too, when we do that. Richard Johnson. Okay.
Just stay six feet away from me.
We all have beautiful masks, so don't worry.
Yeah, I think we're fine.
We'll be, we'll be cautious. Thank you both. Uh, other question commissioners?
Yeah, I, I've beautiful, beautiful plans. Um, looks nice. And I just wanted to, uh, say that I did go to the site. Last week Paul invited me out and, uh, it really is in need of repair, um, the house. And, um, I don't know about the geology, so I'll let other people talk to that. But, um, it would be nice to get moving forward on this, it sounds like. I was curious though, while looking at it, if you had planned on how the water, where the water flow is going to go? Or if you're catching it or are you, are you concerned with how the water is running off of the site?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, yeah, I'm thinking we would plan a drainage swell higher on the site that could capture roof runoff. So that it is filtered before heading down on the hillside. And you know, I've done a lot of those swells over the years and they're very effective. As they allow a large amount of the water to percolate back into the, the ground. So we have space to be able to do that at several locations. So.
Yeah, nice, nicely done.
Yeah, thank you. And the other nice thing about the shed roof design we're proposing is the gutters are at the back of the, the property. So we can, it gives us the height to allow, uh, me to have a drainage swell more at the back of the property. So it's as far from the bluff as possible.
All right, Commissioner Hickon, any questions or comments?
No, just I, I agree with everything else that's been said. It's a gorgeous looking design and it appears like it's going to blend in nicely. So excited to get this officially on the agenda and see where it goes.
I agree. I, um, just one, uh, kind of, uh, helicoptering up for just a second. Is this house located, is it south of Old Home Beach? Is it around that next rocky outcropping? And okay, all right. I just want to make sure I, and I think a site visit, we don't do them very often and we need to make sure that it's properly noticed and so forth. But I think a site visit might be, might be good in this case. I'm, I, I am having, um, a little bit of, just a little bit, I think, of difficulty kind of envisioning this. And, and one thing that might be helpful down the road would be some photographs from, uh, different vantage points outside the property. And it doesn't have to be, you know, professionally done necessarily, but, uh, you know, something either from the, the beach, from, uh, Old Home Beach, from, you know, Trinidad Head, that kind of thing, just to look at sort of the view shed and how it fits in, uh, might be useful. So, um, but other than that, I think I'll reserve other comments for, uh, for when we're in a deeper discussion. But again, thank you, Mr. Berg, very much. Uh, well done. I thought it was an appropriate amount of time. Let's, uh, let's open up to public comments. Are there, uh, comments that you'd like to? And I, oh, I'm sorry. You know, I noticed the owners are here, uh, before I, well, as I opened up the public comments, uh, is there anything you'd like to add, uh, Paul and Michelle? I didn't see you there before. I apologize.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Julian did such a good job. I, I don't really want to add anything, but I'm, uh, I just thought I, I'm all ears for any questions you might have. And I think, um, a site visit is a really good idea.
Okay.
It's a great idea.
All right. Terrific. And thank you for your patience as we, as we work through this process.
So that's.
I wanted to, uh, pose a couple of questions because we did just get the comments from the coastal commission, which were quite extensive and borderline devastating. So I'm just kind of wondering how we approach this. They're going so far as to say we should remove the house and, and just have nothing, you know, so. And we've put a lot of time into this project to this date and, you know, we're planning on doing some more studies as they're asking for, but I guess I'm just kind of wondering. It was, we're losing sleep over this, to be honest. It's pretty much a danger. It's more comments than I've ever received on a coastal review pro, project, especially for residential. I've been doing this for almost 20 years now in this area. I've done projects up in Big Lagoon and City of Arcata, Eureka, many in the coastal zone, and I have never well, it's, it seemed quite jarring to be getting that level of comments for a project where we are replacing an existing house. You know, I do understand some of their concerns, but to go so far as to completely remove all the development and have it be native landscaping was pretty difficult for the Hasequists and I to hear. When we have been navigating this project process with the city for six or seven months. You know, I've heard it all. I have heard it all over the years from the coastal commission. But when it's this level, it's, it's pretty jarring.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. I, I hear your frustration and, and I can only imagine, uh, how, how, um, the Hasequists must, must feel at this time. As a City of Trinidad Planning Commission, we don't have, um, a lot of sway with the coastal commission. However, um, I do want to let the staff, I don't know, Trevor, I'm not sure Eli is on the phone. If you have some thoughts about this, I know it's a process. I'll just tell you personally, I live on 20 scenic drive and spent, um, probably about three years um, in the planning process and working through all the necessary, um, activities with the, all the different, uh, all the different, I guess constituents, um, around, including the coastal commission. So I, I know exactly what you're going through, if that helps at all. Um, and I hope for a positive outcome for you. Trevor, I don't know if you have anything you want to add or?
No, I actually haven't, um, I skimmed the letter. I haven't read it in, in detail, but I did talk to Tamara before I got the letter. You know, I, I think the most frustrating part is, is that sometimes their standards seem to be a moving target. So for example, for, for your house, Cheryl, you know, the, the bluff stability analysis uses the existing Gavians that, that were there. Now it's a new development. You can't, you know, add to the Gavians, um, you know, or, or do significant modifications to them. But that was, that was part of the stability analysis that those Gavians are there and they provide stability. Where in this case, they seem to be saying that you can't use the existing Gavians and that maybe they should even be removed. And, you know, that would really affect the stability. And so, you know, your project was just, uh, five years ago or, you know, and, and so this is a very different take on it. So yeah, I think it's a matter of, you know, me as staff, um, working with the applicant, working with coastal commission staff, hopefully, working with them a little bit, um, more closely to, uh, address these concerns and make them more comfortable. You know, it, it is the city's decision, but the project is appealable to the coastal commission and that appeal can come from either a member of the public or a member of the, of the coastal commission. So if staff is not satisfied, it's likely they would get a commissioner to appeal the project. So, you know, as much as we can, I think we should, you know, try and satisfy their concerns, but you know, we might get to a point where we say enough is enough and the city makes its decision. And, you know, if we have to deal with an appeal process, you know, staff, coastal commission staff don't necessarily, and the coastal commission themselves don't necessarily agree. So, um, you know, it, it, then it becomes a matter of convincing the coastal commissioner as, as opposed to coastal commission staff. Hopefully we don't have to cross that road, but that will be the process is, is sort of staff going back and, and working with the applicant and coastal commission staff. with the applicant and Coastal Commission staff to see if we can work out.
Yeah, it sounds like it's a process we need to go through, and then it will come before the planning commission. Well, we'll try to make the best decision we can at that point.
This is a bad time to lose our stuff.
Yeah, sorry, is someone, is someone making a comment? Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and open to public comments. Please, I'll just remind everyone to go on mute if you are, unless you're making a comment. And please, any public comments about this project? Okay, I see no public comments and hear none. Yeah, so with that, I guess at this point, I just want to say, you know, good luck to the applicants, and we appreciate your patience. We will, will work through this with you. Please, go ahead, Mr. House Bookers, would you like to make a comment?
Yes. The, the, I read the Geo, I read the Coastal Commission report, and I think the person that was writing the report made a lot of assumptions. She's not a geologist, and we are going to address those.
Okay, all right, thank you for your comments. We, we look forward to working with you on this in our, in our next discussion. Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you all for attending. Yes, did someone say something?
Oh, I just had a quick comment. If we scheduled a site visit, I'm assuming I would coordinate that through Trevor?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Please.
And then, yeah. All right.
Okay, okay, all right, thanks very much. All right, I am going to then, at this point, move us to our next agenda item. Again, thank you very much, everyone, good discussion. We are going to move on to the coastal development permit and lot line adjustment between two properties that make up Katie's Smokehouse Establishment. The lot line adjustment will clear up an encroachment of the Smokehouse onto the southern property and satisfy the condition for installing a new septic system on the northern parcel in 2019. So this is a property at 740 Edward Street. And I believe we had a, some public comments. I know Patty Fleischner had sent public comments, I believe Gail Saunders, both in support. Those should be entered in the public record. I didn't see them in the packet, so maybe they came late, but those, I just wanted to point that out. Trevor, did you want to kick us off on this one?
Yeah, thank you. So, so you probably are all pretty familiar with this property, two properties, actually, and they've been operated as, as one entity for a long time with Katie's Smokehouse being, you know, a historic business in town and the residents that's associated with it on the lower property. So it has a, has a long history. It's got, you know, because it was developed many years ago, before city zoning ordinance and, and things like that, it, there are some encroachments and some, some things going on on the property with non-conforming and things like that. I'll talk about that in a little bit. So the northern property has the, the Smokehouse business, the retail business. There's also an apartment in there, and then the actual Smokehouse itself. And then the southern property is developed with, with the residence, the primary residence. And, but they are two separate properties. They're both zoned for residential uses. I did send out referrals for this project. So one of the issues that has come up in the past is that the Smokehouse building, not the retail building, but the actual Smokehouse, had a drain that was connected to the septic system on the southern property. And so the, the Health Department in the past had required that if the properties were ever sold, they had, the lots had to be merged, and that they couldn't be sold with a, a building connected to a septic system on a separate property. So the applicant installed a new septic system. The septic system for the retail business was, was very small and undersized and an older system. He recently upgraded and replaced that. As part of that, he disconnected the Smokehouse from the southern septic system and connected it to the new system on the northern property so that that clears up that encroachment. The property line, the, currently, the property line goes through a portion of the Smokehouse. So this lot line adjustment is just going to clear up that encroachment so that the property line does not cross the Smokehouse. And it's south, it moves it south far enough to accommodate the, the new plumbing. So the, the plumbing headed off from the Smokehouse to the south, so had to be connected to the new system from the south as well. So that's the purpose for the location of the line, so it does get very close to the existing house. So there's, it's not going to meet setbacks on that rear side. It's going to get a little bit closer, but it currently doesn't meet setbacks. So the, it is a lot line adjustment, so it does require coastal development permit. It's subject to the city's subdivision ordinance, which includes a chapter on lot line adjustments. And the city engineer did review the project and will have to approve the, the final map when it is prepared before it's recorded. And there are certain findings that the planning commission has to make as part of this. So those are that the lot line adjustment does not violate existing codes and policies. The lot line adjustment will not create difficult or unreasonable access to the parcels. The lot line adjustment will not require variances to permit standard development. Utilities and public services can be provided, and no street dedications or improvements are required. And so most of those don't really apply because the lots are already developed. Utilities already exist to the site. The applicant has applied to put in a, a second water meter, so that is underway so that they will have their own separate utilities for each parcel. The, the city engineer has recommended approval, so that requirement has been met. The primary issue with this is really non-conformant. So the buildings and the lots are non-conforming. And the northern lot is under the minimum lot size, but the size is actually going to increase a little bit. So it's not, not increasing the degree of non-conformity. So I included the, the city's regulations for non-conforming lots and structures, so you can see what those look like. And basically, you're allowed to modify structures and lots, you just can't increase the degree of non-conformity. So in this case, some non-conformity, like the rear setback for the, the primary residence, is going to be de, the non-conformity will be increased, but most of the non-conformity will be decreased. So overall, it's a decrease in the non-conformity and clears up that, that encroachment with the lot line crossing the Smokehouse. So I think that's it. I think you can make the findings. Like I said, the, the septic system was recently replaced. The applicant has submitted an inspection report for the residential system. The newer system isn't due for an inspection yet, but there is a condition that he has to finish that process of getting the OWTS operating permits. Otherwise, no physical changes are, are being proposed as, as part of this. So staff recommendation would be to approve the project as conditioned in the staff report. And I'm happy to entertain any questions. And then in terms of, yeah, the public comment, so there were actually three comments submitted in support of, of this project. One was from Steve Dusha, and I'm sorry if I pronounced your name wrong. I see you're on the meeting. And then Gail Saunders and Patty Fleischner all wrote letters in support of the project. And those are available on the city's website.
All right, thank you, Trevor. So I'm going to start with Commissioners, questions and comments?
Okay, I'm, this is Diane, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Diane.
Okay, so I, I am in favor of the lot line adjustment, and I know with the buildings in Trinidad being old and, you know, things were built where they were, and I think it's great that they want to do the lot line adjustment and that the septic has been taken care of, and we need that business. We need the Smokehouse business, and I think it's great that they came up and asked the, the planning commission for the adjustment. So I am in favor of that, and I am checking out of the meeting. I am out of town, and so I'm going to just tell you I'm going to vote yes if somebody puts a motion up, and that I need, I need to leave the meeting.
Okay, I understand, Diane. Okay, so we will.
I'm out of town, so I'm.
Yeah, yeah, I know what you mean, I'm out of town as well.
Okay, so I think, you know, what they want to do is fine, and Trevor and the engineer have done their part. And I think, you know, with the comments from longstanding citizens, Fleischner and Saunders, it, it should be a go.
All right, thanks for your input, and we will continue the Commissioner Q and A, and we will go on the record as having heard from Commissioner Stockness that she would be in favor of this.
Okay, and I, there's one more thing I want to say. Whatever the meeting for the, the extra meeting, just sign me up. I'm not going anywhere till May, so it's fine with me. You, whatever works for Richard and Aaron and Tom and you, I'm okay with that.
Okay, terrific.
I'm sorry I had to do this, but I just, I've got to, and thank you.
It's okay.
Thank you all.
All right, thanks, Diane. Bye-bye. Okay, I'm going to continue. Commissioner Hopkins or Commissioner Hakenin, any comments or questions on this?
I just want to clarify, I think it's great to get all these Ts crossed and Is dotted, but just a question for you. You said that the, the only change with conformity is, is relative to that lot line adjustment, and I just wanted to kind of clarify, it already is, the setback is non-conforming. It's just the degree of non-conformity that's changing technically, right? So, I mean, it's, in, in essence, it's a, you know, a Granny Smith for a Fuji apple.
That's correct. So, yes, it's already non-conforming as to a variety of setbacks. You know, the, the Smokehouse itself doesn't meet setbacks, but that's not going to change with the lot line adjustment. Really, the only thing changing is that rear setback from the residence, which will be decreased, so that increases the non-conformity. But on the other hand, the lot size is being increased, which decreases the non-conformity. And in addition, it decreases that encroachment of the lot line adjustment through a building. So overall, the lot line adjustment will decrease the non-conformity on the, on the site.
Okay, cool, thank you.
All right, thank you. Seeing no, Commissioner Hopkins, you didn't raise your hand, right? Did you have any comment? Okay, all right, in that case, I'm going to go ahead and open to public comments. And I see that Mr. Lake, the applicant, is online. So if you would like to make any comments, Mr. Lake, you're welcome to. It's not, certainly not required, but if you'd like to say anything, you're welcome to.
Thank you very much. Well, thanks for hearing this, and it's, you know, I, my wife and I purchased the business 32 years ago. And at the time we initially purchased it, there were a number of things that were, you know, different about the place. It needed to be improved. And over the years, we've actually made everything else outside of this conforming other than the overall notation that it is a non-conforming use, which I might add is written into the zoning ordinance as such and approved. And this is our 75th year of business, and we are the oldest continuously operating business in the City of Trinidad. My, my hope in doing this was to clear things up so that there would be a congruence of all the property lines that, you know, for both parcels, and that it would not be the encroachment. I have learned over the years that my neighbors to the north and the south have encroachments, you know, on their properties into other properties by a foot, an inch, five inches, whatever. But this allowed me to take a line that runs through the, I want to say, the western end of the Smokehouse and, and actually put it outside the building so that all of the building, the construction is inside the property line. So I, you know, it's, as, as I think Diane mentioned, you know, it's a question of dotting Is and crossing Ts and, and that kind of thing. It is a, a switch of a Fuji for, you know, Granny Smith or whatever. It, it, it doesn't change anything I do, nor will it in any way, except to make the, you know, the official record more correct as it applies to, you know, the building code, you know, as far as, you know, buildings being inside property lines. But again, as Trevor mentioned, it, it does, in fact, you know, decrease the non-conformity in a way because the back parcel has a lower tolerance for that. The other thing I might add overall is that, you know, this property, and I, and I talked to some people that know a little bit more about the historical aspects of this property, and that is that when it was originally the Smokehouse and the, the actual business building, which is actually originally was a residence, this was a bigger parcel. And so the retail market was, always was, was built on this larger parcel, and the Smokehouse was also built on that larger parcel. And it was the residents that came later, you know, in, in, in the scheme of things. And so I guess the thought is that when they, when they subdivided the property many years ago, the point of beginning for the surveyor at the time, or what point of reference they were using, was, was probably incorrect. And that's how I think that the lines, you know, kind of got outside of what they should have been, or don't, don't comport with what they should have been. So.
Oh, that's interesting, yeah.
Yeah, so the people, the, the, the Fraziers to the, to the north of me, they, they used to be part of this parcel, that Fraser parcel, and the Huff parcel used to be part of this. When Katie retired back in 1969, 1970, she had split off the other two parcels. And those are fine with maybe one minor exception, but the point being that, you know, this was all one big, you know, parcel at one time. So it's really, the residence is, is the last actor to show up here on, on, overall. So I just wanted to add those, those few comments to give you a little historical, you know, view of what, you know, happened here. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Lake. I, any, let's go on to public comments, additional public comments. Are there other comments on this project? All right, seeing none, I will bring it back to the commission. Do we have a motion?
I think Stevens.
Oh, please, go ahead, I didn't see.
I'm sorry, I, I just want to say very briefly, my wife and I live on Underwood. We love Katie's Smokehouse, and we want to associate ourselves with everything that Commissioner Stockness said earlier, and we support the project wholeheartedly, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Commissioners, do we have a motion on this project? There, there is a proposed verbiage for a motion on page eight of the application if, if someone wants to move that direction.
So moved with the verbiage on page eight.
Okay, do you mind reading it?
I do not.
Into the record, thank you.
Based on application materials, information and findings included in the staff report, and based on public testimony, I move to adopt the information and required findings in the staff report and approve the lot line adjustment as submitted and as conditioned below.
All right, and I second the motion. All those in favor? I see, yes, I see Commissioner Hopkins, Commissioner Hakenin, myself, and I believe Commissioner Stockness had expressed her support for the project. So thank you, Mr. Lake, you are, your project is approved. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right, we are going to move on to our next agenda item. It's getting very dark where I am, and there are no lights in this room, but I'm going to try to read this. So the next project is a design review and coastal development permit for a remodel and addition to the existing two-story, two-bedroom, 2386. and addition to the existing two-story, two-bedroom, twenty-three-hundred, eighty-six square feet, single-family residence. So this project includes a conversion of a five-hundred-and-fifty-two square foot garage to a family room, conversion of a two-hundred-and-nine square foot storage area to a sunroom and conversion of a ninety-four square foot addition, uh, or sorry, pardon me, an add a ninety-four, four-foot square uh, addition to the sunroom area and removal of a hundred-and-thirty square foot woodshed storage area. So we'll, we'll talk in more detail about these, I know that's a lot of numbers there, but uh, basically it will result in a reduction in the actual footprint uh, at thirty-two-hundred-and-forty-one square foot residence. So um, I'm gonna turn it over to Trevor who undoubtedly will explain the project much better than I do. Trevor?
Yeah, it actually, um, it sounds a lot more complex than it is um, in, in trying to describe it. Um, I, hopefully it'll seem a little bit more straightforward uh, as we go through it. So, so this is actually the property that we saw when we were looking at, at the Hasselquist property that's sitting on the big rock above his, his um, house and so it's a, it's a pretty unique property. Um, and this, this was, so um, work did start without a permit in this case and the city was alerted to that last fall. Um, since then, we've been working with the applicants, they had to get a, a geologic report um, to look at the, the bluff setback um, and the stability. The, turns out the, the rock face, the, the drop-off at the rock face is not considered what, is not what would be considered a bluff that has a setback from it. Um, and I did include the conclusions from the geologic report um, in the project. Um, so it did take a little bit of time, um, some of the interior remodeling work doesn't require a coastal development permit. Um, basically some of the decks had been started and um, some of the work on the, the woodshop storage room had started, um, but it, the work had, had not, had just started, it wasn't complete. Now, I did send referrals out, um, not a lot of comments or concerns on this project. Um, it has been developed for a number of years. Um, I did include a summary of, of the project description there on page three and then also, um, the property it has, they have obtained a number of permits um, over the years. And the house was originally constructed in, in seventy-five and then the city has, has approved a, a number of mostly small additions over the years. Um, and then in, in this case, so it's interesting because it's, the end result is, is a large square footage, um, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later, cause that plays into one of our findings. Um, but really the, the footprint is not changing much in, in this project, so um, it's mostly conversion of existing spaces. So that includes um, conversion of the existing garage, which is five-hundred-and-fifty-two square feet, um, conversion of a sunroom storage workshop area, so two-hundred-and-nine square feet. Um, and then there's also a hundred-and-thirty-nine square foot kinda wood, wood storage shed as well that's gonna be removed. Um, the city doesn't have records of permits for those, but that doesn't necessarily mean there weren't permits. The city's building permits are in boxes by year, um, not by property and so they can be difficult to dig up. Um, it's, yeah, it's kind of six of one, half a dozen and the other on that, but I'll, I'll talk about that more when I get to square footage. Um, so that space is being converted in the sunroom and then a, an addition on the sunroom out towards the driveway area, so not towards the bluff area and then um, addition of, of seven-hundred-and-thirty-five square feet of new decking is included. To, um, the property is zoned, um, a mix of suburban residential and um, special environment. The residence itself is within the suburban residential zone portion of the property. Um, it, it clearly meets setbacks, so minimum lot sizes and things like that. Um, let's see, so the, the square footage, the city, whatever the design review findings is that residences of more than two thousand square feet will be considered out of scale with the community unless they're cited and designed in such a way that they're not obtrusive. So in this case, it's much larger than that, but the structure is changing very little, so to that finding could potentially be made. Another um, guideline that the planning commission uses is a, a Florida area ratio of twenty-five percent in the um, UR zone that's based on a two-thousand square foot house on a eight-thousand square foot lot. Um, in the SR zone, it would be ten percent with a two-thousand square foot house on a twenty-thousand square foot lot. In this case, the ratio is, will be five-point-nine percent, uh, for area, the lot area. Um, the height of the structure isn't changing. I've got a summary of the square footages there, so you can see a number of the sort of extra structures that aren't including in the floor area, um, go to zero and they're added into the floor area. Um, you can see if, if the workshop storage area was not permitted, then that equates to a three-hundred-and-three, uh, square foot increase in the footprint of the house as opposed to a ninety-four square foot decrease in the house. Um, the woodshed that's being removed is closer to the bluff area and so, as mentioned in the geologic report, um, the geologist supports removing, removing that um, portion of the structure, so that's a, a positive. Parking requirements are already met and aren't changing, um, septic system, it has an existing septic system with a reserve area, um, that's not gonna be affected by the project, there's no increase in um, the number of bedrooms or, or the, and the structure isn't gonna encroach on the system. I did, and, and, oh, and then in views, um, because of its location, it's not likely to affect views either to or from or along the coastline. I did include some of the requirements for the SE zone because part of the property is zoned special environment. Um, what's interesting is through the um, previous additions, most of these requirements have already been met. So for example, um, for open space protection, um, and um, let's see, uh, public access, those, those have already been granted, the easements for public access along the shoreline and then an open space easement that protects um, vegetation and, and um, the rest of the area from disturbance that's not already developed. Um, and then the conclusions of the geologic report, because it is mapped as being questionably stable in the area where the, the residence is, so um, the report does conclude that the project is not gonna affect stability or be affected by um, stability because it's sitting, basically it's a buried sea stack, it's almost a Trinidad head scale sea stack um, that's, that's there. You know, eventually the land around it might erode and it would become a sea stack, but it's, it's basically this huge rock that it's sitting on top, so it's pretty stable. Um, like I said, the, the septic system um, isn't changing, um, there, there was a, an operating permit issued for the property, the, the owner needs to transfer it into their name, but other than that, that's good to go. The design review, the protection findings as usual are written in a manner to allow approval, um, but if they are somewhat subjective and so if public comment um, shows that some of those can't be made or if planning commissioners feel some of those can't be made, they should be reworded accordingly. So staff recommendation at this point is for approval, um, you do have several options, um, you can add conditions to address any concerns that might come up, you could continue the project to request additional information, um, or deny the project, but denial should be based on not being able to make one or more of these specific findings in here. Uh, conditions of approval are pretty standard, um, I did include the double the permit fees based on our after-the-fact permit policy that we have. Um, and then, design reviews for a year, um, erosion and stormwater control has to be implemented during construction and any conditions of the building inspector will be required to re, um, be met and construction activities will minimize vegetation removal. Um, and that's it, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, let me start first then with uh, Commissioners. Any questions on this? I have one question and that's the height, um, I don't know if it's in here, Trevor, is this, what, what's the overall height of the two-story building today and is that changing with the remodel at all?
Um, I, it's not changing at all, so I didn't actually have that specifically up here, but I have my files from the previous approvals, if you want me to pull that up.
Um, I, I guess it's probably the direction I was going was just if it was changing and if there would be any concerns about view shed, I don't see any direct neighbors that might be impacted in any way if the profile of the house changed, but um, that was kinda where I was going with that. I guess I, question, are there any neighbors nearby that could be affected by a change in the profile?
I don't think so, because it sits down below Seenick Drive and is surrounded by trees and vegetation, um, but the neighbors have been notified and so um, do have a chance to um, offer an opinion.
Okay, and I'll open to public comments in a moment, um, as well, so if anyone's on the, uh, in the meeting that would like to comment on this project, they'll, they'll have an opportunity. I guess, I, you know, all in all, I mean, I really, I think this is a nice design, I understand the conversion from kind of uh, existing buildings to a new structure, I'm a little hesitant on the size um, of this, of this uh, residence. I mean, we do have a, a generally a guideline of two-thousand square feet and this, this exceeds that by quite a bit. Um, I do understand that we're converting existing buildings, but some of these buildings, you know, if you're converting a shed to a residence, that's a very different, uh, very different property. So I'm just mulling that over, I'm not uh, I'm not making a, uh, I, I don't have a preference one way or another just yet, um, I'm still kind of looking this over, so I think I will defer now to other comments from, from the Commissioners. Or questions. Commissioner Hopkins, did you-
Yeah.
Have something?
I uh, when I read it, I, it seems like water, where the water's gonna go off on this property, it's basically gonna go down the hill right to that, the Hasselquist property and I hope that they're, uh, I hope that they're doing something to improve the situation and I was wondering if that's been, been addressed.
Um, the, the geologic report um, that was done, he, um, the geologist was actually familiar with the site and had been out there several times, um, consulting with the previous owner, um, to make sure that drainage and, and vegetation and, and things like that were um, appropriately done and um, you know, one of his recommendations to the current owner is to leave, leave those improvements in place as they are and as it currently exists, he feels that it's, it's pretty stable.
Are, are they saving water? I mean, is it, are they holding water for their needs? Isn't that what we were kinda talking about at one point with the water contingency plan?
Well, they're connected with the, to the city's water system. They, I know they have um, you know, a fancy solar system there, um, but I, I'm not aware of any rainwater catchment, um, but the city doesn't currently have any requirements for
I was just curious.
I think we, you muted yourself Cheryl, um, I just had one comment, uh, looking at C1, that the, the picture, the, the drawing that was proposed or turned in for us here. And Trevor, correct me if I'm wrong, but as I see this, um, that west 3D view down in the bottom corner, basically the existing gray structure, they call it house, but it's a, a conglomeration of the garage and, and the other rooms, none of that roof line is changing, that is all staying existing, the, the drainage, the amount, the square footage, all that stuff is gonna be the same, there's a small portion to the left of this west 3D view, that if I think if you go to S- A2 is that section, the kinda bright yellow, um, mustard yellow and purple, I think is that same edge there, if I'm orienting myself properly and that's really the only thing, they're slicing that piece off the front and adding it to the back and I do appreciate, Commissioner Kelly, your comment about um, you know, increasing the usable square footage, but I do appreciate that it's within the confines of the existing building though too, um, or the existing structure, so visually, I don't know, functionally, it's, it's a big increase, but visually, it doesn't seem like it's gonna be a huge increase, I guess those are kinda my only comments on it, unless you see anything differently, Trevor?
I agree, you're correct.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna go uh, to public comments at this time and also, I guess Trevor, is the applicant present in the meeting?
Uh, the applicant's agent is here, yes.
Okay, so if, would the applicant's agent like to add any comments before I uh, continue with public comments?
Uh, yes, I just, first of all, I would like to thank everyone for allowing us the time on the agenda and Trevor, thank you for representing the project so well, you explained it perfectly. Aaron, you talked about the mustard gray area on um, A2 and so the, the whole reason for um, moving that section to the front or the east side of the house was um, the reason we, we removed it from the backside is that portion was built over the slope and so we were just, we volunteered to remove that to get it off of the slope and, and transfer that square footage to the front, that was the only reason for removing it. And the geologist, uh, Gary Simpson with SHM um, agreed when he came to the site that that needed to happen anyway, so I think everyone is in agreement that that was the right thing to do and that was the only reason for moving it.
And no concern with exposing that now to natural drainage from the geology standpoint?
Well, just, um, he recommended in his report to make sure we have uh, ample vegetation and so we'll make sure that our landscaper um, gets some vegetation on that slope.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, all right, I, again, apologize for the background noise, um, I want to open up to the, I know it's a party in St. Patrick's Day in Santa Rosa, but I'm not participating in. Um, all right, so let me open up to public comments and I will mute myself here.
You're participating by wearing green, Jim.
I am, yes, that's Kelly. Uh, I see no public comments, does anyone else see, and, and Trevor, we didn't receive any uh, comments, I guess, from the rancheria or any, okay, great, I just wanted to double check that, all right. Um, I'm gonna bring it back to the commis, the planning commission then. How are we feeling about this? Do we want, is there further information needed? Do we wanna continue for that reason? Do we want to make a motion uh, to either approve or deny the project? What say you, Miss Nurse?
I'd say I feel like I have enough information at this point to proceed.
Okay. Would you like to make, uh, Commissioner Hopkins, do you need any more information? Do you wanna, uh, and then if not, do either of you wanna make a motion and we'll see And I believe this, oh, sorry, please, go ahead. Were you going to say something, Mr. Hopkins? I'm sorry. Oh, okay.
I was looking for a motion.
Yeah, I hear a motion.
Okay, I, I, I guess the only thing that I would, uh, at some point, we're gonna be needing new places for people to live, like small ADU units and, you know, I was just wondering if maybe that was in here somewhere. But other than that, I don't see a problem with it.
All right, I, I feel like I've satisfied my concerns, um, as I said, I, I just kinda wanted to, to think this through, so I, I will go ahead and make a motion, um, based on the applicant's, application material, information and findings included in the staff report and based on public testimony, uh, or in this case, the lack of public testimony. and based on public testimony, or in this case, the lack of public testimony, I move to adopt the information and required design review, view protection, and other findings in the staff report and approve the project as submitted in the application, as described in the staff report, and as conditional herein. So is there a second to that motion?
One second there.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so the project is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your input, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I am going to move on. Sorry, I'm looking at my engineering report. And I believe our last item is just, in the agenda at least, is scheduling a special meeting. So we were going to consider scheduling a special meeting for the, to discuss the general plan update, I believe, and then also potentially a continuance of the Hasselquist property discussion. I don't know if that'll be ready or not. And Trevor, you had mentioned some dates. I don't have them in front of me, but I think it was March 31st, or, yeah.
Yeah, and I would say for Hasselquist, I mean, I'm not sure they'll even be ready for the April meeting, but we'll see what they can do. I don't think that will be ready because I'd have to have, you know, if it's in two weeks, I'd have to have the staff report next week. Yeah, I was suggesting if we want to stick till Wednesday, and maybe Angela, you can weigh in too, to make sure we don't have any committee meeting conflicts. But I was suggesting Wednesday, the 31st, or Wednesday, April 7th. But I'm going to have to change my recommendation on the April 7th because my mom is now vaccinated, so she's going to come up for my birthday, which is the 6th. So she's going to be here on the 7th. But I could meet on the 8th if we want to do it that week.
For me, and I, you know, I'd love to hear from everyone else. I think the 8th would be good, or that week. I think it'll be tough for me to do the 31st, but we can always have Richard stand in for me. So, Aaron and Tom, do you have any preferences? Diane said she'd go with the flow.
I was going to say the 7th, but the 8th works better for me anyway, so, yeah. The 31st does not work at all for me.
Okay, does that work for you, Tom?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, it's a go. Then we will do our next meeting then.
Angela, can you just confirm there's not any committees or anything you're committed to?
Yeah, I was just about to chime in on that. I will double-check the calendar tomorrow when I'm in the office.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, all right, thank you. We're going to move on then to any commissioner reports from standing committees. Okay, and I see Aaron shaking his head, no, I have none, and Tom has none. Okay, and Diana has dropped off. So we will go on then to, Trevor, staff reports.
Okay, so I presented the, our priorities that we came up with at the last meeting to the city council last week, and they were generally in agreement. An additional general plan-related issue came up with trying to figure out, dig deeper into the RV parks that are currently both Trinidad Bay Trailer Courts and Hidden Creek RV Park, which are the two properties in the city that are zoned for visitor services. But they've basically, over the years, been converted to long-term uses. It's not necessarily a land use violation because the city doesn't have a definition of what is short-term use. I mean, people, you know, in Trinidad Bay Trailer Courts used to come and stay all summer, you know, three months of the year and stay there. And so, you know, we don't have a time limit on how long an RV can stay there. Trailer parks, RV parks, mobile home parks are regulated in terms of a lot of the structures on the site and designations of whether they're mobile homes or RV spaces or utility spaces are regulated by Department of Housing and Community Development. You know, they do, so currently, they provide a form of affordable housing in the city, but it's not, it's not official. The city, you know, doesn't have credit for that. And we don't know whether they, you know, RVs can even qualify as housing. But it's an issue we need to look into. I did talk with Coastal Commission staff a little bit about it. They're going to look into, they think there are some similar situations up in Delnart County. So they're going to see if we have some other examples. You know, and then the question is, as part of the general plan update, does the city need to rezone those to something else and then look for other properties that should be visitor-serving uses? I think the city is going to have to conduct some sort of inventory or study on visitor-serving uses in the, in the planning area to show that there is enough visitor-serving uses and how much land does the city need to designate as such. That, of course, also plays into short-term rentals because those are providing visitor services in the city currently, which the Coastal Commission supports. So that's, they just wanted to make sure that we include that as part of our general plan update discussion. So I have started digging, I've tried to dig into it a little bit, but it's a complex issue with a lot of layers. So I'm going to, I'm going to keep working on digging into that. Other than that, I am continuing to work on the circulation element update and responding to Coastal Commission comments on that, as well as preparing an official response to Coastal Commission comments on the conservation open space element. If you recall, those were very substantial. And I'm still waiting on some figure updates, and then I'm writing a letter, and then I've got two different versions of their document that they commented on. One of the things the council requested was those Coastal Commission comments. So I did start a section on the city's website for those. And so the Coastal Commission comments are all available on the website. Under the, under the general plan box, there's a subheading for Coastal Commission comments and responses. So all the Coastal Commission letters, as well as their comments directly in the documents, are up there yet, so, are up there. I don't have any of my responses up there yet, though, but I am working on that. And I think that's it, we'll just continue. We've got the parking surveys out. I think those might have been out for the last meeting. I can't remember it. I'm working on, I need to finalize the data sheet so that we can start collecting data. I did want to get some data collected in the wintertime. And we're about, but it has to be, you know, we don't want to go out when it's raining. And so we're about to, it's about to not be winter anymore, but I think, you know, that's fine. It was just sort of a baseline, but I think it's a skewed baseline anyway because with COVID still, Trinidad is just a little bit more crowded, I think, still, than it usually is because people are trying to recreate outdoors since they can't gather indoors. I've noticed that the parking lot is still full even on weekdays. So, so I think that that's fine, but we'll, we'll get plenty of data. There was a suggestion to continue it till August so that we get more summer data, and I think we can do that as well. So I'm just continuing to work through our priorities.
All right, thank you very much. So the visitor services on that topic, I just wanted to disclose that I did receive an email from Kathleen Lake, member of the community, asking about that. And I understand, and let her know that that will be discussed as part of the housing element. So I haven't responded in any detail on that item at this point, but there is some dialogue that's going on about that. All right, I think we have reached the end of our agenda. So with that, I want to thank everybody. Again, Happy St. Patrick's Day, and the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.